Give Denise an opportunity to pull up our guest Sarah Odeyo from DFI who will be here to answer any questions at the end of my presentation. Hello Sarah, can you hear us? There she is. Sarah, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes we can. Thank you for joining us. And Denise is about to pull up the PowerPoint as well. And so we'll probably-
I can't see anything, if I was supposed to be able to see something.
Can you see the PowerPoint?
All right, hold on a second. Oh, once it opens up, yeah.
Uh, you say, share the screen?
Yeah. You have the green button there, there you go.
And then, share?
Click on the thing that you want to share, PowerPoint, right there.
Yeah, uh-huh, I'll share that. Okay.
Good job.
And then, I want, you want this on slideshow, right?
Yes. All right, Sarah, can you hear that? Or can you see that? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, before I get into the content of my presentation, I just want to thank all the folks who've been involved in this so far, including Sarah Odeyo and her colleagues from DFI, Sarah Van Leeuwen, Frank, the folks from the church, Pastor Keed, Dad Lock Committee, the session, and the congregation of the church for approving the lease, all our internal staff who've been working on this, particularly Paul, Ray, and Emily Bird. I want to thank them so much for all the hard work they've put into this so far. No matter what happens with this project, I'm proud of what we accomplished and I think our partnership with the church can be a model for future partnerships. This type of thing is an indicator of a healthy community in my point, in my point of view. This kind of thing indicates that we have churches who are willing to put their money where their mouth is when it comes to discipleship. It indicates that we have elected officials that are willing to try new things and work with non-traditional partners. Because believe it or not, city church partnerships are relatively new phenomenon. It indicates that we have staff, like some of those folks that I mentioned, who know how to carry water on projects like this. Those last two things in particular are signs of a healthy and good government, which you all know is my ambition for the city of Brevard. But you know, there's something else that makes a good government, and that is knowing when you're behind the eight ball. And unfortunately, that's where we find ourselves today. And you'll see what I mean in a few minutes. So the goals of today's discussion are there on the screen to provide a brief overview. And folks, it will be brief because it's very technical and I'm not able to describe all the technical details of the report here today. But it is online, and so for those who are interested in diving down into the technical details, you can go to our website and find the full report unedited. And then to discuss the implications of these findings for the church housing project overall. We signed the lease with the church back in the early summer and we immediately started searching for a geotechnical firm to do an assessment of the site's geotechnical condition. We eventually went with a group called Solid Ground NC on the recommendation of DFI, who's done work with them before. And they started their assessment of the property, and it was a pretty standard assessment. The most notable part of it was that they did eight soil boringings to a depth of 25 feet across the wooded property. And if you read the report, you'll see a map of exactly where those boringings were located. They were spread across the site, and so I feel comfortable saying that it was a pretty representative sample of the soil conditions from across the site. And here were their main findings. The first is that based on other methods that they used, they concluded that the site hasn't had any significant development or structures on it since the early 1900s, so for over 100 years. Two, that the site is covered with different types of soil at different spots. But the one thing that most of those soils have in common is that they are quite soft. And they are soft pretty far down to a depth of 15 to 18 feet. And that to mitigate the effect that soft soil has on the developability of the site, you would have to remove it all and replace it either with lots of stone and other structural fill or bury aggravated piers into the soil bed there. And as you can imagine, both of those are pretty significant undertakings. So, this is the information we had in hand a month ago when we postponed the public meetings. But what we didn't have in hand at that time was once, was what we've since gone back to give. And that is, what exactly would those measures described in number three there cost? And so we went back to Solid Ground, we amended their contract, and asked them to take the particulars of our site, the soil composition, the acreage, and so forth, and use their engineering formulas to calculate what the site work would cost for a project on this site. And this is what we're going to present today. So this is the new information that hasn't been shared publicly yet, that will be new this evening. And before I go to the next slide, I just want to provide a caveat that the map that you're going to see on the next page is not an architectural rendering, it's not a site plan, it's merely a concept that we use to run the scenario in. So, the scenario that we ask Solid Ground to run was a 50-unit apartment, multifamily apartment complex of about that scale that you see on the screen. Again, this is not a site plan, just a possibility. Because that is the type of project that would most likely be constructed. We chose that size and that number of units deliberately because that's the maximum number of units that Lytec would fund. And without Lytec, the project will be unaffordable. And so we wanted to make sure that the possibility that we mapped out would be something that Lytec would fund. And that is what you see on the screen. So a scenario of approximately 50 of 50 units on approximately 3.3 acres of the church's property, with these extra site costs would be about 4.1 million in site cost alone. Whereas an average site of this size in western North Carolina would be about 1.3 billion. We ran another scenario on the cost of site work for a less dense development. And although less, it was still significant. And I'm not presenting those findings to you tonight because that other scenario would not qualify for Lytec. And so although the site work cost would come down, the total cost of the project for us would go up because we wouldn't be eligible for that significant outside funding source. We would need to have a project more like this with this many units in order to be qualified for that outside funding source. So, we're in a pretty big hole, pardon the pun. What does that mean for the project, besides being in a several million dollar hole? Well, we're about to find out. I want to draw your attention in particular to number three on this slide, because that's where we are today. DFI has agreed to brush off their Rolodex and start calling their Lytec development partners who do these kind of projects on our behalf and ask them whether they'd be even interested in doing a project like this. If they say yes, then maybe we keep talking. If they say no, knowing the challenges of this site, well then, we probably need to consider ending the project. DFI is also going to reach out to North Carolina Housing Finance Agency with some clarifying questions on what this means for the project when it gets run through their Lytec formula. Because some of the variables regarding the developability of the site and what that means for the cost will be factored into the formula and would, depending on the answers, would make this project less competitive. So we'll have that information in the weeks to come. So, even though there's still more information out there that we need to have a thoughtful conversation about the future of this project, this was a significant enough piece of information that I thought, for transparency's sake, we ought to announce publicly today. And so, Mayor, if you want to have comments from the council, that's fine, but just know that there's still a little bit more information to bring to you all that we'll bring here once we find it out. So I'll leave this slide up on the screen for you to take in, and I'll try to answer any questions. And Sarah Odeyo as well will be able to take questions from the council if you have him.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. As Manager mentioned, we are not looking for action or decision tonight, but if there are questions or comments from council, now is the time. Mr. Wise, any comments or questions?
I don't really, I don't really, this is not unusual in our area. For this kind of soil conditions, it's not surprising considering the site hasn't been touched in over 100 years. I am so very interested in finding a path forward on this property because we don't have properties, anything we can do to find a way to develop this would be in our best interest.
Mr. Holder?
I'm still hopeful, and thank you for everything that you've done, Sarah, and staff here. And I'm just going to keep hoping that this will be able to work out and accomplish the goal that we have, at least in part, to help build affordable housing. Thank you.
Mr. Rob?
Excellent report, Mr. Manager, thank you.
Mr. Daniel?
Excuse me. I, yeah, I agree with Mr. Wise that this is not an uncommon scenario in our neighborhood. We are in a riverbed, ancient riverbed here, and those soils are still here. I would be hopeful that there's some, in other words, it sounds like this assessment that we are being presented with is talking about replacing all the soil. I didn't quite understand that. I mean, if you put in a gravel footing, 25 foot, you know, I mean, I'm just curious as to what the other options are, and I would like to see this project go forward, obviously, but I would like to have a better understanding of what the options are.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering just a little bit more detail on the next step there and what we're hoping or what we think we might hear back from developers in terms of, you know, what feedback we're looking for.
So, I mean, if you guys remember the conversations we've had about this before, one of the goals of our efforts so far has been to try to make this project have as little risk as possible. That's how you make it competitive. You de-risk the project for the developer who's going to come in and make the investment. And as you can imagine, conditions like this make the project risky. And so it might take it outside the realm of consideration for any investor to want to take on. And so that's why, that's what DFI is going to ask their development partners here over the next few weeks, whether these soil conditions make this project too risky for them to even consider. And we will report their findings back to you once we get them. But all that will be moot if the North Carolina Housing Finance Authority comes back and says this project won't even be competitive, right? If the extra cost and the, you know, special conditions that you've discovered on the soil get factored in to the formula like we expect them to, and take us outside of the realm of competitiveness for Lytec, then we wouldn't be able to pursue that project either. And Lytec is highly competitive. Even good projects without these challenges sometimes don't get awarded, most times don't get awarded Lytec grants. And so any complication will have a significant effect on its competitiveness. And so those two pieces of information are what we're trying to hone in on here over the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you. Well, obviously, it's not the news we wanted to hear. I know we're still hopeful and still working, but it's not an easy yes, which we like to have for these kind of things. But I did want to just thank the church for, you know, the incredible gift of even getting to the point where we are, and obviously, the partnership with the Presbyterian Church is key to this entire project and hopefully a model for how we can work with other groups as well in the community. The other thing that brings to mind for me is just how difficult this undertaking is and not, it's not impossible, but it is incredibly difficult. And the number of sites that we have available to even contemplate building affordable housing is incredibly limited. So I'm thankful that we're going through the steps to get the facts about this particular site. But I also just want to say that, you know, we've been here, or I've been up here when we actually had an affordable housing developer come with a project proposed. And, you know, there were folks in the crowd who responded that, you know, this should really go somewhere else, or it doesn't belong in this spot. And there are factual findings, like what we're looking at here, that may determine that it actually should go somewhere else, or it can't go somewhere else. But just saying that it feels like it shouldn't be in a particular spot is not enough. And we don't have enough sites to just pick, you know, the ideal middle-of-nowhere site that would have no objections. So I'm glad we're being factual about this and getting all the details. You know, I walked through downtown yesterday on Labor Day, and the number of "help-wanted" signs that were in downtown businesses was amazing. I mean, I counted probably six or seven just on Main Street. And that is a symptom of the housing costs as well. There are just, are not a lot of people who can afford to live here and work here. So it's a worthy endeavor, you know, obviously, we're going to keep going. And this isn't the only, the only thing with affordable housing that we're working on, as Emily showed us at the last meeting, but look forward to hearing more, and I'm still hopeful.
And Mayor, the closed session later on will actually be on our Plan B property. So we'll be discussing what we found out about that Plan B, and Councilman Baker has a Plan C property for us, too, he sent me on Friday to look at. So if we can't make the site work, we'll try to cultivate other options.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, moving on to the consent and information agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. One, ARCA Required Administrative Policies. Two, ordinance declaring road closure for special event, County Revard Fine Air Festival and Halloween Fest. Three, resolution fixing a new date of public hearing for annexation Jason Shepherd, 34 Verdery Avenue. Four, Council Rosenwald Community Advisory Board minutes of May 16, 2024. Five, Council Parks Trails and Recreation Committee minutes, July 31 of 2023. Is that 2023, or should that be 2024?
This should be 2024.
2024. Six, Council Finance, Human Resources, and Citizen Appointment Committee minutes, June 3, 2024. Correspondence, no action offered as information only. The ABC Board minutes of June 27, 2024. ABC Board minutes of July 22, 24. And the following two items that were moved from new business up to consent, this would be number eight, the appointment of the city representative to Transylvania County Transportation Advisory Committee. And number nine, amend council meeting calendar to add the Acoustic Trails Strategic Planning Workshop. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Items are approved. We will now move on to unfinished business with the proposed amendments to the City of Revard Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Dangerous Dogs. And our Chief of Police, Tom Jordan, will review what this is about.
Again, this is the, I believe, the final time this is up now. The changes in the ordinance expand the ability to declare a dog dangerous or potentially dangerous in certain circumstances, also increases the number of options that are available to us, and creates a better due process for the owners of dogs that have been declared dangerous or potentially dangerous. So this expands and protects due process at the same time. Respectfully submitted to you all.
Council, you've had the brief, we've had the public hearing. We are now looking for a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed amendments?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open it for discussion. Mr. Daniel?
I believe we've discussed it thoroughly, I have no other comment.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I'm the chair of the Public Safety Committee, and we've gone over this several times, and believe we're in a good spot, so I'm in support of this.
Mr. Moore?
I think it's a model for others, municipalities. Thanks to you.
Mr. Holder?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm afraid of dogs, I'm allergic to dogs, and so this is very close.
Mr. Wise?
I just think this is a great example of the public reaching out to us, finding a need, addressing that need, and getting something done. So thanks to everyone involved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The amendment passes. All right, moving on to new business. We have board and committee appointments, and I believe Mr. Wise is the chair of the HR and Human Resources Committee. I believe I'm the chair, and you will be briefing this.
Yes, so we looked at four committee appointment boards over the past couple of weeks, and I think we've brought a few up here before and had brought them back to our committees as we looked at them. So the first one we'll go through is ABC. That is a board of five members, two seats are up for reappointment, or up for, what do I mean, for reappointment? No, for appointment. And our feedback was that the ABC board was in need of, particularly in need of people with some financial expertise, and we were lucky to have two applicants that did have those qualifications, Susan Miller and Paul McCellar. So we are suggesting those two to be appointed to ABC. And I need, in terms of the making motions and votes, can we, do we need to do these separately or all at once? I need to recuse.
Either separately. All right. Do I have a motion to approve Susan Miller and Paul McCellar for the ABC board?
No.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Daniel?
I have no discussion.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, no comment.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Holder? No comment, except I know that this is something that people have to apply for, but the makeup and being more diverse in the future, I think will be helpful. And letting people know that the opportunity is there, letting everybody know the opportunity is there, whoever's interested can apply.
Mr. Wise?
No comment.
Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, next up is the planning board. The planning board is, consists of seven. For the previous makeup was four from the city and three from the county, it is now five from the city. Anyone jump in here, correct me if I'm wrong about this, because we are moving an ETJ member into the city pool. So two seats are up for appointments. Those, we are recommending to go ahead and reappoint the Chair, Greg Hunter, and Vice-Chair, Reed Wood. They are just finishing up their first terms as a two-term board. And I need to recuse myself because I am lucky enough to be the husband of Reed Wood.
All right, do I have a motion to approve Greg Hunter and Reed Wood to the planning board?
I need a motion to recuse Councilmember Wise.
Do I have a motion to recuse Councilmember Wise?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you are recused. Now, do I have a motion to approve Greg Hunter and Reed Wood for the planning board?
So moved.
Any comments? Mr. Baker?
Just a quick comment, I mean, I think the planning board definitely benefits from folks who stay on there for a little while. That can be a technical job, and I think it's nice to have some folks who want to be reappointed.
Mr. Daniel?
I have no other comment.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Holder?
No comment, thank you.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They are appointed. Number three.
Number three is Board of Adjustment. This is a board made up of six, is that right? I think that's correct, six people. We did not have enough candidates to fill all the seats in this board, however, we had three candidates. Jackson Tate, he would be going on for September. Peter Offen is a reappointment, and then again, Reed Wood also applied for this board along with planning. We did check, and she can sit on both boards, and so we're recommending her for a third seat, for the seat expiring in November.
I assume you are recusing yourself again?
I think I'm still recused.
No, you need to recuse more than one.
Yes, I'll re-recuse.
Do I have a motion to approve Mr. Wise's recusal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve Jason Tate, Peter Offen, and Reed Wood for the Board of Adjustment?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Baker?
I have no comment.
Mr. Daniel?
I have no comment.
Mr. Moore?
No comment.
Mr. Holder?
Just a question, does this still your board, or do you still have openings?
I think we have one seat that will still be open.
One open, okay. That's all, thank you.
And can I add one more thing? I neglected to say this planning will also have one seat open.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number three is approved. Four, the Dangerous Dog Repelment Board.
Yes, Dangerous Dog Repelment Board. So this board has existed for a while, but we're kind of retooling it now, and it's a board of three members, one of which needs to be a veterinarian, and then two citizen members. And we were lucky that we had two seats available, and one of those headed is with a veterinarian, and one was a City of Revard member, so that worked out well. So we are recommending Dr. Thomas Cox as a veterinarian seat, and Susan Hazar as the board. And just as a note, Susan Hazar was one of the people that spoke to us publicly and kind of helped spearhead this new ordinance we have about the dangerous dog issue. So we talked about that in the finance committee and felt comfortable going ahead and appointing her to this board, but I didn't want everyone to know she had a kind of related cause.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any comments, Mr. Holder?
No, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Moore?
No comment.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I'd just like to elaborate on the comments about the citizen member. I feel like to the clarification, the process requires the Chief of Police to investigate the Dangerous Dog, this Dangerous Dog ordinance, which removes any conflict, I think, that we have with any citizen members. So that was my thinking at the time, so.
Mr. Baker?
I have no comment.
Mr. Wise?
No comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four is approved. All right, I believe that is the end of the board appointments, and that is the end of new business. We are now on remarks and future agenda considerations. So we will open this for comments. Mr. Moore?
I'd like to commend Mr. Jones for his service on the ABC board, and thank you publicly and as a member of the record for all the work that you've done in your service.
Thank you, Max.
Mr. Holder?
Didn't know what Max said, thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Wise?
Couple of things. This afternoon, we were very lucky on the Public Works Committee to do a preliminary engineering report kickoff meeting with our engineering partners, KCI. This is really exciting for our wastewater treatment plant, and I want to thank them, all of our Public Works Department, all of our staff who is there, as we are now actually moving forward with this very much needed project. And so we're finding our path along that one, which is a huge capital campaign, so that's very exciting. Two, tomorrow night is our first round of candidate forums in our community for County Commissioner and School Board. I want to remind everyone in the city, because I've been asked this a lot, yes, all City of Revard people can and should vote for County Commissioner and School Board. They, we're members of the county just like everyone else, so don't forget to vote. And please go support all of our candidates. I've been up there, we've all been up in these forums, they're stressful, and any support you can give them would be fantastic. And it's a fantastic way And it's a fantastic way to see what these people think. And you're a member of the community, and your voice is important. So that's it.
Mr. Baker?
I have no comments tonight. Two in a row, no, no, no. No, that's wrong. I had a lot of comments.
Mr. Daniel?
I'm speechless.
Mr. Attorney?
No.
I know, yes, we have a closed session, we won't forget. Madam Clerk?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
I do have one. So just a reminder to the members of the public who are interested in the Acoustic Trail project, the new Acoustic Trail Advisory Board will be holding its second meeting this Thursday at 3:30 PM. And so if you want to hear what they're up to and perhaps participate in that conversation, that meeting is open to the public and will be in this room. And preceding that meeting at one on Thursday is our complimentary working group. So folks from the industries around town that are going to be involved in incorporating the Acoustic Trail into our civic fabric will be meeting privately. This one's not open to the public. This is just an internal staff meeting. And we'll be actually preparing for the council's Acoustic Trail Strategic Planning Workshop in October. So lots of Acoustic Trail developments this week.
Okay, just a couple of things. Next week, I hope everyone realizes, is our, the art is in the air festival, the Einpliend Air Festival that Heart of Rivard has. So you're going to see artists out there painting. This is just another great event that is going to be going on. And one of the really exciting things is that we're going to be having our mural painted on Clemson Plaza. And that is the mural of Loretta Akin or Monts Maybeli. That was approved by council almost six months ago. We got the grant funding, and I believe the artist is actually going to start painting it on Monday and hopes to have it done by Saturday when we have the actual big festival day. So you'll see that going on, and that's just really exciting. Another way to really honor our heritage here in town. So keep all that in mind. We've had, yeah, two big, big events going on here. I think Mr. Wise, manager, mentioned them. We have two massive capital projects. These are the two largest projects that the City of Rivard has ever undertaken. First is the Acoustic Trail, which is forty-some million dollar project. That one that we've been working on, that is moving forward with our restructured committees, with, you know, the funding in place, with identifying the need and partnering with Henderson County for a regional project. That's huge. And the other one is the wastewater treatment plant. Again, one of the largest projects in the history of Rivard has ever, that we have ever undertaken. So thank you to everyone. This isn't easy to have happen. I know staff has worked extremely hard. We are a small city with a small staff, but we get an awful lot of things done. So those two things moving forward, really, really exciting. And I also want to mention, I want to mention our faith community. You know, we've had two incredible examples tonight of where our faith community has partnered with us to make Rivard a better place. We have the Presbyterian Church who donated almost five acres of land for what hopefully will be affordable housing. But that's remarkable. That is absolutely remarkable. And then we had the Cove Church here tonight. They run the only walk-in shelter for our community. Folks, that is huge. When it gets down into freezing temperatures, there is nowhere else for us to take people that need shelter. So I am so grateful that both of these communities have really acted from their heart and really have partnered with us in critical areas to try and make this a better place. You know, we talked a little about affordable housing and the need. I met with the Rivard Housing Authority, talked with them last week. They manage 163 affordable housing units. What do you think the waiting list is for those 163 units? Anybody have an idea?
Five years.
Two hundred and fifty-seven families are on the waiting list, and it is at least over two years. So two hundred and fifty-seven families waiting. We have 163 units that they control. And so when we say we need to try and make affordable housing projects work, we need to try and make these affordable housing projects work. And yes, there are challenges. And no, it didn't work out exactly the way we wanted it. But we are going forward, looking at options, because our community has such an incredible need. So just a few things to think about. We are just so lucky that we have so much, and we are so lucky that we are able to partner with groups like the Presbyterian Church, who are trying to make it better for people who really do need, need a place to live. And I believe with that, it is time to have a motion to go into closed session. Do I have a motion?
For the purpose of property acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Please turn off the broadcast.